Thank you. Next, our invocation will be led by Ms. Mrs. Jacqueline Gonzalez.
God, we come to you, we ask the Holy Spirit to lead and guide us on the decisions that we make today. Praying for all those suffering right now, especially those recovering from surgeries, battling cancer, and even those in mourning of their lost loved ones. We remember our 21 and all of the families impacted here in Uvalde. We pray for those that lost during the recent floods, and we ask for you to restore us, dear Lord, restore our town, Uvalde, and restore all of those towns impacted by the flooding. We have so many to pray for, God, but we trust in you. We have great faith in you, and we believe in your steadfast love for us. Lead us today on all the decisions we make. We pray this all in your mighty name. Amen.
Now if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, you may be seated. Item number two, open forum. We welcome your comments on items listed on the agenda. The audience, a patron's portion of the meeting, is limited to three minutes per person and will last up to 15 minutes total. Delegations of more than five persons shall appoint one person to present their views to the board. Keep your comments in a positive nature. Please do not expect board discussions of items raised during the open forum at this meeting that are not on the agenda posted for this meeting. If comments made during the course of the public forum warrant further information, we will direct the superintendent to gather information for consideration at a later date. Our first speaker is Mr. Simon Ortiz. Agenda item number seven.
Thank you, Board members, Superintendent Collins, for allowing me to speak to you about some concerns we have about the preliminary budget. I say "we" because I've been working with Dr. Hector Gonzalez on some concerns, and I gave each one of you a handout that basically has what I'm going to speak about. Dr. Gonzalez and I put this together, this following analysis. First, we did the enrollment data from last year's budget presentation and this year's draft budget presentation. I'm not going to go into the numbers itself, but if you'll notice, one good piece of information is the fact that our ADA percentage went up, of course, after the tragedy, it went down to 81.8, but it has been going up the last two years. This preliminary, this year's preliminary budget presentation has a 10% decline in enrollment and also in attendance, ADA, and state appropriations on ADA for conservative purposes. It went down 10% across the board on the revenue. Enrollment, what is the logic for the 10% decline in enrollment on the budget? A budget should not only be conservative but realistic. Do we really expect not to replace the whole graduating class of 2025 plus 100 more students? The average loss in enrollment over the last three years has been 56 students per year. Attendance, the budget is built on state appropriations on an ADA of 2933, which relies on the 10% decline in student enrollment. Moreover, the budget projects a 2% decline in the ADA to enrollment percentage, whereas the last three years it has been increasing. This is contrary to the trend of the last three years. One of the objectives of a budget is to set goals for staff to strive for, or at least to maintain the status quo. And if you notice, I did a little table with three columns, the first being the draft, actually four, the first being the draft budget as presented, and then the draft budget decrease. Next, the school year 2425 enrollment decline of 111, and then a suggested budget, which has the enrollment going from 3925 to 3814. Even though there's only been a 56-person drop on an average, we went ahead for conservative purposes, took the 111 that we lost last year. The refined average has an 83.1 from last year, and the budget put it down to 81. We think that 83.1 should be it. It seems like a reasonable estimate to use is 81 to 83 to conservatively predict your state funding. However, if we as a district believe in our work to improve attendance, and this board wants to make commitment that this is a priority, we should use an estimate between the 83 and 85 to challenge all of our staff to strive for excellence. Why is this important? It's because at what they have it, it's a $900,000 decrease. At what we're suggesting, it's a $400,000 surplus. So, thank you very much. We don't believe we're in a situation where we should be weighing options for further cuts until we are convinced that we will have such a decrease in enrollment in the ADA percentage. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Diana Oldevado Carruth. Agenda items three and seven.
Good evening, Diana Oldevado Carruth. I wanted to address the board this evening regarding two issues. One is the filling of the vacant seat tonight as you'll be interviewing candidates. And with all due respect to the five individuals who have applied and who would bring good skills to the board, another perspective, and I appreciate their willingness to serve. I really am concerned that this board, in the last year, maybe year and a half, have chosen to select who sits in those vacant seats and represents this community instead of allowing the voters, who should have the right, to select who represents them. And that was not an opportunity that was provided to this community by this board. And that is very disappointing because as we have been looking at the experiences of this community in the 70s, the litigation and the decrees that came from those difficult years, and we've talked about equity, and we've talked about representation, and it all comes back to allowing the citizens of this community to choose who represents them. And once again, this board has chosen not to allow that to happen. It's very disappointing. In regards to the budget, as you continue to have conversations about how the district moves forward and what decisions you're going to make in order to prepare to wrap up the current year that we just ended and prepare for the coming year, I know there's a lot of challenges. I know one of the things that the administrative staff has said repeatedly to you, to those that come to the meetings, and to the general public through news releases and comments that are made to the community, that they would like to have a balanced budget, present a balanced budget to this community. That would be a wonderful, in a perfect time, in a perfect setting, to be able to do that. The reality is that there are districts across the state of Texas that won't be passing balanced budgets because they can't, the resources aren't there. Uvalde is not alone in that difficulty. And so, I appreciate the work that Mr. Ortiz and Mr. Gonzalez have done and presented to the board. I hope you will consider it. I hope also that the school has been working diligently on the coding, which we were assured would bring revenue into the district, as well as the sale of Slate Creek, put that money back into the fund balance. And if you need to draw from it to meet the needs for the coming year, you can do that as most other school districts will do. We're not an anomaly, we're not on an island all by ourselves. We are just experiencing the same challenges every other district in this state is going through. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, interview applicants interested in serving on the School Board of Trustees to fill the at-large, unexpired term until the next election.
Thank you, President Betis. Gentlemen, do we have our first candidate in the waiting room? The Zoom link? This will be a Zoom interview? Do you have one in the waiting room currently? That, we're good? Yep, bring one in.
So, our first applicant is going to be Norma Esparsa Carranza.
Do you have one in the waiting room currently? We're good. Yep, bring one in.
So, our first applicant.
We're good.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you hear us? So, what we'll do is, we each have a question to ask you, and we'll give you time to answer it, and then we'll go, each one of us will ask you one question, okay? If for some reason you can't hear, just let us know, okay? And I apologize because I feel like there's an echo.
That's okay, I apologize too, and it's from my end.
We can't hear you. And then we'll go.
Can you hear me?
Norma, can you hear us, or can you hear me? We can't hear you. I can see your mouth moving, yes, but we can't hear you. We can't hear anything.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Well, can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear me?
We got two hearings, good, good.
Then we'll go start it, okay?
Okay.
Will you tell?
You can hear me, right?
About yourself and why you want to serve on the UCSD Board of Trustees?
Okay, so, I am, as of May, Dr. Norma Esparsa Carranza. I am an educator for over 30 years, that mostly I served in Uvalde CISD. I am an advocate for UCSD. Anywhere I go, that is what I, as of May, Dr. Norma Esparsa Carranza, I am an educator for over 30 years, that mostly I served in Uvalde CISD. As of one year, I have started my own. I am an advocate for UCSD. Anywhere I go, that is what I, as of May, Dr. Norma Esparsa Carranza, I am an educator for over 30 years, that mostly I served in Uvalde.
Can you hear me? It's like her voice is just repeating over and over. Okay. Okay, we'll wait.
Okay.
Norma, are you good if we call you on speaker?
Are you going to continue, or, I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
Can, I think we're going to try to call you and put you on speaker because we can't hear you, and it keeps repeating.
Okay.
So, give us just a second and we'll call you, okay?
Okay.
So, sorry. Norma. Text her. I don't know if you can. Norma, can you hear me? Let me text her. It's okay. Can you tell her it's best if we do it via phone?
It's best if we do it via phone.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, at what point do we?
Let's try to.
Yeah, because the second applicant, so a Zoom, so we'll just do the applicants that are here and then circle back to them and hopefully be able to make contact with them. Wait, Mika. So, we'll go ahead and the first two are going to be Zoom. We'll just do the applicants that are here, and then if you'll text them and let them know that we're making our way back to them, and hopefully we can make contact with them. Thank you. There she is.
Can you hear me?
We can't hear her.
We cannot hear you. That are here, and then if you'll text them and let them know that we're, I think Mika's making contact with their, so we'll go, we'll continue with the applicants. So, our first interview this evening will be Jennifer Russell. And if you can just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the UCSD Board of Trustees. Can you tap the mic?
You turn the mic on?
It's green, will you tap it in? Because we can't hear you, or just move closer.
I think that there are, it's kind of one of the questions, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to answer it here or not.
You're good.
Okay. I think that there's a series of things that have kind of led me to this moment because it's not something that I've sat back and dreamed about for a while. And that, as a business owner in this town, we need a school system that is successful and a draw to the community rather than a school system that potential professionals will look at and go, oh, I don't know if I want to bring my kids here. Especially, and unfortunately, I think that happens, and I think it happens now because of the performance ratings, because of the finances. I think we find ways around it by the kids that, and the networks of private schools and Canipa School and Sabanow, and the buses that come here to take kids away. So, as a business owner, that is an aspect that I think really needs to change. Like, the school has to do better. I think that as a community member, that we want a school in our community that we can be proud of so that parents are not sending their kids elsewhere, especially sending them elsewhere until they come to high school and want sports. Like, they can be here, and they can be here as a part of the community. And I think it's been going on a long time. It came to my attention, actually, when my bonus kids moved here, and when the tax referendum came up as far as being a community member, I had to look, I had to pull, like, that's just my nature, is to say, okay, why do we need this money? And if you go in and you look at the TEA reports and you look at the PIMS data, you can see the discrepancies between schools that function well and where they're spending money, and UCSD, and where it's spending money. And you can put it side by side and look at it and go, okay, we don't need more money, we need to reallocate the money that we have to the appropriate places to be successful. And there are other school models and other schools out there that do it. I also think as a community member, we have, I have a bonus kid, I don't have kids of my own, I have a bonus kid, and we spend, unfortunately, a lot of time in the courtroom with that bonus kid. And he wants to attend school at Uvalde High School. Luckily, it was not a huge issue in our hearing, but it was definitely something that we had to prepare for and be ready to explain how we could really say that it was in his best interest to pull him out of Northside ISD and O'Connor or Brandeis and bring him here, how that was in his best interest. We're doing it, like, we're getting it done, and this is where he wants to be. But, and we are staying attuned to make sure that he's going to get the best education possible. And we've met some really great people and talked to some really great teachers and admins, so that's been a good experience. And in that light, I had someone come over to my home a few weeks ago, and they were in a little bit of an uproar about what they had perceived as spending cuts and where money was being cut in programming for kids. And I do what I do, I pulled up the data, and we looked at it, and still the same issues are out there. I don't intend to be more direct, so I did what I do, and I picked up the phone and I called JJ. I called JJ, and I was like, look, like, what's going on? And he was like, first, we haven't done any of that stuff that you're talking about. Like, we haven't done that, we haven't cut the extracurriculars, we haven't cut the teacher pay, like, we haven't cut teachers, like, we're not doing that. And then I did learn that a lot of the issues that were shown in that data were being addressed, that the admin stuff was being dealt with, the heavy admin stuff was being dealt with, that they're working on the curriculum, that they're moving expensive program to try and make it more. And all that stuff is exciting, it's transformational change that is, has the opportunity to happen here. And I think I have a skill set that can help with that. We had to do that in the business when I moved here. It's not easy, it takes commitment, intestinal fortitude, it takes a lot of communication, it takes talking to people to let them know why hard choices are being made. But, and time does tell, it takes time. But I think I have a skill set that can help with it.
My question is, if a policy or action is voted on by the board, but you voted against it, how would you react in public regarding said policy action?
Thought that was the easiest question on this sheet because it happens all the time, whether in a church, in organizational leadership, or even here, that there's going to be those times, not everybody's going to agree, there's going to be conflict. But when a decision is made, while you can say, okay, I don't agree with this, it is the decision that's made, and it's what you go with. And then, in time, you reevaluate, you say, okay, did this work? And if it works, you eke and say, okay, they were right, and I was wrong. And if it doesn't, then you go back and you come up with a new plan.
In the face of declining resources and the possible need to reduce programs or staff, how or which?
And then in time, you reevaluate. You say, okay, did this work? And if it works, you be crow and say, okay, they were right and I was wrong. And if it doesn't, then you go back and you come up with a new plan.
In the face of declining resources and the possible need to reduce programs or staff, how or which data would you use to prioritize those decisions?
I thought this was actually one of the hardest questions on the sheet. And I thought it was the hardest question on the sheet because I'm not sure with where UCISD is right now that we know what ground truth is as far as monetary needs and what we actually can do. I think there's a lot of shuffling that still, still needs to go on and is going on to align the school with state standards and improve things to go, okay, this is what we're really dealing with. And if this is what we're really dealing with, what decisions can we make? I think the PIMS data is out there. I think that there's a lot on there that you can look at and go, okay, we have to fix that. And then I was at the meeting the other day. I do not remember her name. She was a very nice lady. But the CFO who was out there, who was very passionate about what she did and she was very clear cut. I've been doing this a long time. I know what I'm doing. This may be what they said. They were off by $300,000 last year. That's what I think we should be this year. So she knows what she's doing. So you have to rely on that and your superintendent data as well to say, okay, these are the programs that work and where we should spend money and these are the ones that don't.
Yeah, what is your opinion is, what in your opinion is the greatest issue facing UCISD?
Relevancy, relevancy for the community. I think that UCISD may not being connected and appropriate for the community. I think it's been a struggle, an ongoing struggle for a while and it's why people look for the other options that they do in education and, in education and schooling and why the outlier schools get some of Uvalde's best students.
What in your opinion is the largest barrier to student success?
I think that it depends on the age of student that you're talking about. I think that for high school and middle schools, middle school students, their ability to self-regulate, self-manage and organize themselves as well as at-home support tend to be their biggest barriers. I think for the younger students, socioeconomics are much more impactful and that at-home support is second for them.
Ms. Russell, what do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board member?
Well, school board member's job is to set a budget, set policy, and then oversee superintendent as she runs and manages the school and to make things, sure that things are following policy and budget decisions. I think in this particular situation, and I, I think it's starting that a school board member here now also has to be prepared for that transformational change and to be a positive part of that. To be able to communicate, to be able to collaborate and to be able to commit, to commit to making change even when it's hard, talk about the reasons why and engage with people that either don't know or might have a different opinion to see if you can come up with the best solutions.
Ma'am, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school?
I think I kind of answered this one at the beginning. It was those kind of four things. Thus the, the for business reasons, I think we need a school system that draws people here. For personal reasons, community reasons, I think we need a school system that the community is proud of and can get behind. For personal reasons, I want the best school possible for my bonus kid. And then I want to be a part of that transformational change. I think I can have value.
Those are all the questions that we have. Thank you. Our next, our next applicant is Erica Yala Munoz.
Also feel free to grab a water if y'all want. Uh, Ms. Russell, if you need a water, feel free, okay.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the UCISD Board of Trustees.
Okay, so I, I'm Erica Yala Munoz and I've run a campaign. You've seen my posters out there and I also applied for the open seat. And I have two children that go to the district. I myself am a product of Uvalde CISD. My parents as well. I'm a local business owner. I'm vested in Uvalde. Like my, it, it pains me to see people not, you know, doing well. I mean, we, we have the ability to produce awesome kids. I mean, this has been, this has been proven. I mean, we've had kids that have gone to Stanford, Harvard, I mean Carnegie Mellon, UT, I mean tons of wonderful schools. And so I feel that we have the ability, it's just cultivating that, that environment again. You know, the attitude that the kids have these days and making it positive. So my, yeah, like I said, my kids go to UDLA. I have had nothing but positive things to say about the district. I for one have had personal interaction with teachers that go above and beyond and they don't get paid for it. You know, principals, vice principals, the whole staff. I mean, teachers that are in the trenches, doing what they can to make it happen with less staff, you know. So I see it, I feel it and, you know, I see parents volunteering their time just to make the school work properly. So I, I have a very positive outlook on what can happen. And for me, I want to be a part of that. I feel like I have a skill set. I'm a CPA. You know, I have a lot of background in analytical data. And I just, I feel like that I could be useful and I love Uvalde. I mean, I wouldn't send my kids anywhere else. I've, I've had the opportunity to go other places. I've, you know, hey, why don't you send your kids to Canipa? Why don't you, you know, and I feel that this is our home. This is, this is where I want my kids to know that they're from. I mean, this is where we grew up. I mean, we have been on the west side and, you know, and that's how I feel. I have a very strong care for all kids and I want to see everybody succeed. So that's, that's why I'm here.
If a policy or action is voted on by the board, but you voted against it, how would you react in public regarding this said policy or action?
So if that was the case, I would definitely explain that, you know, even though I do have strong opinions and everybody has the right to their own opinion and we're not gonna always agree. But I think that being able to communicate and being able to collaborate together, there's obviously the ability to move forward and just, just work together. And, you know, we're not, it's again, we live in a democratic society and so when things don't fall the way you want them, there may be an opportunity later on to work together and try to make things, make things better. And I mean, there's, you know, once somebody's voted on it, it's, it's been voted.
In the face of declining resources and the possible need to reduce programs or staff, how or which data would you use to prioritize those decisions?
I think obviously foremost, we'd need to look at budgeting. We'd need to look at forecasting, definitely how much money we're receiving, where our funding's coming from. If there's an ability to, like we've all spoke about grants, maybe try to find funding other places that, you know, could help that cushion, you know, cost benefit, you know, analysis. I mean, there's tons of, all kinds of analysis that we could do, so.
Thank you. What in your opinion is the greatest issue facing UCISD?
I think for sure at this moment, financial. I mean, we're all struggling with that. And I think too, another thing that I realized that people are not aware of the dire financial situation that we're in. I think it's, you know, been going for so many years that we just keep rolling over and just keep pushing, kicking the ball along. And people don't understand that we can't just make money appear and we can't keep spending. So we have to pull back and I think that if we could communicate that better to the community and to this, you know, to the staff, to, to the district, I think people would understand and maybe even be more willing to, you know, have a tax increase.
What in your opinion is the largest barrier to student success?
Um, I think for sure it would be, I think organization. I think the motivation that children have these days. I think that I don't think parents, well, I, I think that it's just not communicated at home anymore. That, you know, you have to go to college. You have to do well. You, you know, the one job you have is to get up and go to school and learn. That's your job as a child. That's all you gotta do and go have fun. Make it fun. And I, and I know the teachers work very hard to create that interest and that, you know, the fun for them. But again, we could do better on incentives, on initiatives. That's always something that we could work on that I see that, that's, you know, and I know we're doing that for attendance. But I don't see it as much for good grades, for achievements. I think that's something that we could do. And I think also just educating parents and telling them like, look, set a routine. Come, you know, and, and get on their homework, communicate with their teacher. I have had great success, very effectiveness with communicating with my son's teachers, with my, my daughter's teachers on a daily basis with some of them. And I feel like a pest, but, you know, it's, they're like, don't worry, don't worry. It's not, you know, because they know I care and I want to see them succeed. And so they're, they're there. I mean, nine o'clock at night, they're texting me, you know. So I think that in itself is, is educating the parents and, and giving them this expectation. Like, you know, you want to see your child do well. Do you want to see them succeed in life? This is what we need to do for them. Have a plan in place when these kids start on the first day and say, look, this is a contract that you're, you're signing with us. And you're gonna, you know, you have your part of the deal, just like I have my part of the deal. So, you know, I think that's also a big thing is that we need to get parents more involved and have them more aware of what's going on. Like not when the six weeks or nine weeks is up, say, oh, guess what? Your child failed. Too bad, you know. And we need to have more of that communication.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Uh, what do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board member?
For me, I think it's communication. I think it's willingness to work with one another. You know, being on a team, having ethics, you know, just bottom line, just being ethical, just having consideration for one another. And just thinking of the community first, thinking of the students and saying, you know, what is best for these kids? Am I making the right decision that in the end is gonna be beneficial for the kids, for every kid? Not just some kids, you know, looking at it and saying, I want the community to grow. You know, cultivate here within this community. You know, not so much, you know, am I worried about? And I know we're in a bad way. I know that Uvalde is definitely not attractive right now, you know, like we, like we've heard from outside, you know, people that may want to move here. But we need to focus on our community and, and repair it and restore it. And if people don't want to come here, it's okay. If people want to take their kids elsewhere, it's okay. Because we're gonna make the kids that want to be here and the parents that want to be here better and stronger and, and more successful. I mean, that's what we've got to focus on and, and work on, on our own community and just put all, all of our efforts in it.
Is there any particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
So the major issue, I would have to say, when I see those kids and they're smiling and they're so excited to be at school. And like I said, I spend a lot of time on campus because I'm PTO treasurer and of course, I've got to buy everything. And so then I end up delivering everything. I'm the only one with the card. So I've spent a lot of time on different campuses and I get to see the kids. And it just, and I, you know, I guess I've never, before PTO, I was not as involved. But because of PTO, I've been able to see the little things that even PTO does and the smiles, the snow cone machine, the popcorn. I mean, just little things that we think, God, that's really, what are we doing that for? You know, why? Why are we raising all this money? But it means something. Like these kids light up and they're just excited. And those are some of those initiatives that we gave the kids, like STAR. You know, we had a whole thing for STAR, like getting them ready for testing and encouraging them and getting on the loudspeaker and saying, you can do it, motivating them. So it's those things that, because I, you know, I have obviously a full-time job myself and, you know, lots of hats that I wear. But I want to be a part of it because I feel like, like I said, there's so much good here and we just need to get that back and be positive and try to, to make good, you know, for these kids. So I guess the motivation for me is just to do good for all kids, just to see them succeed and, and follow them and see where they end up. And, and, you know, graduate college, high school and all that and be successful in life. My motivation.
Okay, our next, our next applicant is Tina Anne Quintanilla. Will you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the UCS, UCISD Board of Trustees?
Yes, first I want to say thank you for having me here tonight. I really appreciate that. And I also want to let it be known to the public that I do recognize that this is a selected position and not an elected position. So I take this very seriously as I too am a product of UCISD, fourth generation. My grandmother only went to second grade, but, you know, my whole family is from here and we are also rooted from here. Class graduate of 1999. And the time that I went to school here was not like the times today. They have changed. My undergraduate degrees in sports medicine. My master's degree is a master of science in health and human performance. And I'm a PhD candidate writing my last two chapters for organizational educational leadership and policy studies. So with that being said, I do a lot of research and I take education super seriously. So that, with that also being said, I have previously ran for an at-large position against Mr. Cal Lambert back in 2020. So five years ago, a lot of things have changed in those five years. And, and with those things that have changed in the last five years, they were dramatic changes that affected our community. And so that is my introduction. I am here to find ways to recultivate and bring everybody back together, reunify.
If a policy or action is voted on by the board, but you voted against it, how would you react in public regarding said policy or action?
Thank you, Mr. Javier Flores. I think it's always important to be your authentic self, but also know that, you know, we stand united. And I think that's a large problem within our school district is when people go into closed quarters and they have conversations. And we out here sit and we wait and we're wondering, what are y'all speaking about and why is it taking so long? And we kind of get like a little bit of an anxiety out here, you know. And so, and And so, um, and so I think that if we, um, begin to collaborate and have these, um, platicas and speak to one another and openly and kind of, you know, be a family. Cause that's what we're, that's what we, that's what I grew up with here. I grew up with family, JJ, I know you did, I know. Everybody, I know all of us did, you know? So it's like, Ms. Laura, you graduated from here too, you know? So, you know, I, I know that, you know, all of us have the intent and the will and the love in our hearts to make this place, uh, you know, a successful, um, because we've seen it deappreciate through time. And, um, but I always think that we need to be open, honest, transparent and allow people the opportunity to, to express themselves, um, because, you know, they are taxpayers. And, um, I would like answers too, you know? So it's, it's all about respect. It's like you give their respect, you get their respect back. So it's that, it's that kind of thing.
In the face of declining resources and the possible need to reduce programs or staff, how or which data would you use to prioritize those decisions?
Well, first and foremost, I look at the budget. Um, I know that we've had a rollover of CFOs um, in the last ten years. Um, and with that being said, you know, money is not being allocate, hadn't been allocated, you know, tracked. I know for, I can go back to meeting agendas ten years ago where I announced, you know, concern for these, um, the allocation of fundings and whatnot. Please don't make me do it, but I could. Um, but I think that, um, in in looking at the statistics of things, I think there's way of cooperation. Um, for instance, like the crossroads, um, there's a lot of money that's being spent at the crossroads. But I think that if we cooperate with Southwest Texas College that, um, we could introduce their adult education program um, so that those students can attain their GEDs or high school equivalencies. And I think as together, we need to be able to provide alternative resources, you know, because, um, the, at the junior college, I used to teach, uh, GED there and TSE and microbiology. And I was an academic advisor and, you know, so I did a lot for the college. And I think that what we can do is by unifying, um, both programs to kind of run parallel with one another. And we can really set, um, our school campuses up for success. And so I think, um, with that being said, I think that we should think about cutting down budgets, um, with crossroads and then referring them over to the junior college for high school equivalency or GED. And I think that that would form that program. It offers a morning and evening, um, program. So it meets several demographics. If you're a worker, you go in the evening. If you're not a, you know, whatever accommodates, you know, multiple areas. And I think that will also help out the college as well.
Uh, what in your opinion is the greatest issue facing UCISD?
Um, thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Um, okay. So tell you a quick story, story time. Um, I had Eagle Pass was one of my campuses besides Uvalde. And I had a student, Indira Luhanu, and she was from Piedras Negras. And she was a four-point-oher, smart girl. Smart girl. And, um, she was at the junior college and she said, um, I want to apply for a scholarship. And I said, well, you're a four-point-oher and you are a science major. And let's go girlfriend, let's apply for the Jack Kent Cooke. And she was like, no, they won't take me seriously. I'm from Mexico. And I said, listen, you traveled two hours to get across the bridge. Then you traveled two hours to get back across the bridge. And you have a job here in Eagle Pass and you're a full-time student and you hold a four-point-oh. You can't tell me that your testimonial is not enough to get you a Jack Kent Cooke scholarship. So I pushed her to apply. She was awarded and she graduated from UNC. So in my opinion, I think that we need to model programs that are successful. And, um, the, the biggest issue that we're having right now is certified educators. And Dr. Gonzalez mentioned that he was gonna soon be offering a, uh, K through sixth, uh, grade program, which is great because in education, there's something that's called grow your own. And so, you know, you want to grow your own, you want to keep them here and you want to keep them, you know, we don't want to uproot our people anymore. We've already uprooted enough. Like it's time to, like, let's concrete this again. You know, so that's, that's where we need to be. We need to grow the foundation again because it was destroyed, you know? So with that being said, I think we need to look at that is growing your own and, and, um, and successfully completing that.
Um, what in your opinion is the largest barrier to student success?
Um, thank you, Mr. Rizzo, for your question. Um, so I think right now, um, the whole world is looking at what we do, like every move. And we need to cultivate goals and we need to meet higher expectations. So if we are a board member, right, and issues are, arise to us, I think it is appropriate to delegate to one another and say, hey, you know what? I think I need you to really look into this, Ms. Jackie. Can you think, can you do that for us? And you know what? JJ, I know you're into law enforcement and I really, really need you to help me out with this situation because this was a concern from the public. And then we conduct our own researches, right? And we bring back that information to each other so that we don't only have a problem, but we also offer a solution. Because it's really easy to complain, but then where's the solution, right? So I think if we hear the complaint and we delegate to one another and we actually take this, you know, listen, if I'm selected, I have a year. And I have a million things in my head that are just constantly running through that we need to do, like grants and all kinds of stuff. So work needs to be done.
What do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board member?
So I think we need to have open discussion. And also I think we need to just be transparent, you know? I don't know if y'all been to the Dalton campus lately or any time recently. But, um, I was PTO president for a very long time. And I noticed that our school campuses were not ADA friendly. Um, our playgrounds were not ADA friendly. Dr. Harold was superintendent at that time. As the president, I, um, earned the monies, um, to do two, two things. One, to build a gym that would protect kids, um, in case there was a shooter. This was way before the shooter, right? So that would have been nice. Two was to build a musical, uh, play system outside for ADA. So people who could, and also for general population, um, so that they could, uh, roll their wheelchair chairs around and have access during lunchtime also, or during recess time. I think a lot of times we don't think about these things. And there are so many opportunities out there to capitalize on. And it just takes the right people in the right positions to do that.
Ma'am, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Um, yes, there is. Um, thank you for your question, Dr. Quinones. Um, particular issue for me is the advancement in our educational system. I think that, um, we lack a lot of, um, attendance. I think that going Fridays off was not a good idea. I think we should have modeled, um, what the college does. Uh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday classes being that they're longer. Those who are deficient in math will go to classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays because those classes are longer. You know, I, I feel like in modeling what higher education does will be most effective for our community. And so, um, that is my main priority is, you know, restructuring, remodeling, rethinking, like, let's, let's start this over again. Cause this is what needs to happen, right? And we shouldn't be ashamed of saying that. Like we should, you know, be able to say, look, what we're doing is not working and it's time to dismantle and rebuild. And that's where, that's where we're at. And if we can say that transparently and just be like, hey, we're trying, you know? And the way you can help me is by bringing me like, you know, help also, like bring, bring me your resource. If you know the answer, like also, you know, I'm willing to take your, your information. So, um, with that being said, you know, I too have, I attended a meeting last week, but started to prompt me to think of questions. I attended a LULAC meeting. Started, um, helping me prompt, um, questions in my head. And then, um, I started thinking about school security and such. And I just started this investigation and trauma-informed schools. And I think it's important that we do that. It is free. It's through Texas State, um, University. Um, it's a virtual and you can train everybody. And I think that that's universal. And I think that that's something that we should also capitalize on because we should have, um, an appropriate plan. I too, uh, worked for UCISD some years ago, um, as a school nurse when, um, Anna Watkins was here and Julie Mice. And, um, and during that time, our medications and our nurses cabinets were not labeled with student names or pictures. So if there was a substitute nurse, then they could just go in there and just say, okay, this one's your inhaler. This one, take this pill, you know? And so I had a problem with that because there was not an identifier. Now, if you go into any nurse station, you will see that they are very similar because I went in there and I organized a system to where you could identify a picture with the alert of what that child had or illness or what they needed, you know? So thinking about those things, I think that we can progress. Um, if we just start assigning our own selves back to what we can do. I mean, these, those of us that were elected and those of us that were selected, um, it's, it's our jobs. Thank you. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Are we able to go back to the beginning? Okay. We're good, thank you. Norma, okay. Wait for JJ. Norma, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. You'll just give us a minute, um, waiting on JJ to come back.
Norma, they can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay.
Cash, is there any way that we could turn the volume up? I mean, I can barely hear, but I don't think, um, Jaclyn and Javi over here can really hear her.
She's not talking. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Norma.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to interview today. Could you hear me?
Standby, Ms. Norma.
I can hear her, but they can't hear. And I can barely hear her. I know you can't hear.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Norma, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear?
Better than better than before. We're gonna adjust the mic and then we'll get started, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Can you try again, Norma?
Good evening.
Oh, that's perfect. You just hold it. Can you, can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the UCISD Board of Trustees?
Okay. So first of all, good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to interview today. Uh, I am Dr. Norma Esparsa Carranza. I am a Uvalde graduate and a very proud one at that. Uh, I have been an educator for over thirty years with twenty-six being at Uvalde CISD. Uh, I will have one year of retirement at the end of the month. But during this time, I started an educational consultant business because of my love of education. What, I'm, I'm sorry, what was the second part of that to tell you about myself? And there was one more thing.
Why you want to serve on the UCISD Board of Trustees?
And this is because of my love of education and because I have served here for many years. Uh, I feel that my experience and my years at Uvalde CISD have given me a wealth of information, some knowledge, and that I can share and that I can, uh, bring to the table. I am also, um, very close to many people in the community that have known me as an educator and as a community member. And so I think that brings a lot to, uh, the Uvalde School Board.
Thank you.
Norma, this is Javier. Uh, my question is if a policy or action is voted on by the board, but you voted against it, how would you react in public regarding said policy or action?
So as I said before, Uvalde is very dear to me. So, uh, with everything, there's a positive and a negative. So even though the policy that I voted maybe against has some, some benefits and some positive aspects to it. So I would focus on that to allow the stakeholders to also believe in what I'm telling them and what everybody else voted on because I have to be an advocate for Uvalde SD. In fact, I, I, I strive to be an advocate for Uvalde CISD. And so, uh, just with that, it brings not only that I'm supporting what we're doing as a team, but it also brings that transparency to the, to the community because I am giving them positive points to the policy. I am encouraging them to understand and to, uh, give that policy an opportunity to create a better UCISD.
Thank you.
My question is, in the face of declining resources and the possible need to reduce programs or staff, how or which data would you use to prioritize those decisions?
So of course, there's many sources of data that we can use. But I would want to see our, like our strategic goals. Have we met those? That's data as well. Have we met that? Our district and campus improvement plans, have we followed that? Is that a cause of why we have to, uh, eliminate some programs because of these, uh, plans that are not being followed? What is the impact of the current program? Have we kept up with that? Or are we just kind of saying, well, Or are we just kinda saying, well, you know, this one has to go because we spend more money on this one? We have to be very strategic in what we're doing and get all this information. The efficiency of the staff within the program, are we just putting people there to kind of, um, make the program flow? Are we really training them and making sure that they're knowledgeable on what we're doing so that it can be a success? And anything that we are doing away with, I would first like a breakdown of the sort, resources that we're using. How are we utilizing them? By need, by cost, number served, uh, how impactful was this program in terms of educational-wise? You know, give me data on scores, give me data on, 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 you know, specifically on different types of coursework or, or courses. Um, is, was there a committee to determine this or is it because I said so kind of thing? Uh, because that is a big, uh, part of transparency. So we wanna make sure that other people are being included in these decisions. Uh, my other thing of this would be program sustainability because if we're getting grants, let's just say we're getting grants because there's this, this program, this new program that are be, that's being passed to us, but are we gonna be able to maintain it with local funds after this? That is the question that we would have to ask ourselves. We can't just say yes because we see a million dollars on the table because before we can get that one million dollars next year. So those would be my questions for the reductions.
Thank you.
Hi, Norma.
Hi.
My question is, what in your opinion is the greatest issue facing UCISD?
I think the lack of consistency and the lack of transparency, communication. I know that there's a lot of things that go out. I, I understand the communication person. We, we have all that. I understand that. But when we move people without justification and without reasonable cause, that sometimes people are actually saying, why did I get moved? And we don't provide that before all of the other people are notified that they're being moved. I think we're fading that. We're fading our staff. We're fading our students. And so that is a big issue right now.
Thank you.
Hi, Norma, this is Jesse.
Hi, Jesse.
What in your opinion is the largest barrier to student success?
I think it's, it's going to have to be the, the continuous changes. So if we have a program this year, but we don't have it within the next, we only have it for two years and then we change to another program for curriculum instruction, you know, following that, that creates a lot because they're already used to one program and then we change it up on them. So I think not only just life itself, which is, you know, home life, you know, just, just life, but we put that extra pressure on them because we keep changing things. And that is, it, that, that affects the students. That affects them tremendously. And as educators, we find it easier to just say, oh, let's try this new program. But we need to start thinking of, let's try this new program and keep it, you know, longevity of this program and not just every two years change. Because those, those kids that are going through our system through the UCISD, uh, schools, they're gonna be affected because they're gonna be hit at third or at fifth or that kinda thing. Cause by the time they get to fifth, it changes again. And so, uh, that's important for me that, that, that be a support rather than a hindrance for their education. And I think, I think that is, that's, um, that's a problem.
Good evening, Dr. Carranza. This is JJ.
Um, yes.
What do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board member?
So I think it has to be transparency, honesty, dedication, and to be genuine. Because once we sit at that seat, we cannot change when we leave that seat. We cannot be one person there and another out here. We have to maintain consistently. Our personalities have to be the same because these are the stakeholders. When we see them out in public, when we, you know, when we're just in events and community, we have to be that same person that they look for us to, to give them answers, right? Uh, so, um, it's very important for me that the main thing is transparency. We cannot hide things because we feel that that should be a secret within us. I know that there's some things that are confidential. I, I get all that. But there's some things that our stakeholders must know. They must know. And that, that is, you know, that I guess falls back to honesty and dedicated to, to everybody that we serve.
Thank you.
Hello, ma'am. This is Robert Quinones. Hello. Is there any particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Well, there are many, but one that I will tell you is that I feel that some policies, uh, although I know that on, on my own, by myself, I cannot do that, but as a team, right? That I would like to see staff being retained, right? I would like to see more of our staff not leaving the district. More of the staff being encouraged to stay pro, you know, not only through encouragement, but through promotions, through, uh, just, um, being noticed that they are doing a lot for what, you know, and I know that is the shortage across the district, but that's why we need to take care of them or across the state, I'm sorry. But that's why we need to take care of our staff. We have to be those that advocate for not only our children, but for our staff. Some of our children or students, they're used to that staff. They are, they, they have had them, you know, for a while and then all of a sudden they leave. And so I feel that the staff also needs that, um, pat on the back, that little note sent to them. You know, it's not always about money, but it's acknowledging what they do. And I think that's, that's very, very important and very needed.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much for, um, being patient and, um, waiting on us.
No, thank you. Thank you for being patient with me.
Thank you. We should have one more, um, right? Yes, Iliana Romedo. Okay. That does. Iliana?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, so if you're ready, we'll get started. We'll each, um, we'll let you have a moment to introduce yourself and then we'll go around and speak to, um, ask you a question, okay?
Okay.
I hope we, and if at some point you can't hear us, just let us know, okay?
Okay.
Okay, we'll start with if you'll tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the UCISD Board of Trustees?
Um, well, let's see, I'm, uh, I teach, uh, biology and genetics at the college. So I get a lot of product of the high school. Uh, my daughter is about to be a junior. My son's about to be a freshman, so they're both gonna be going to school there. Um, and I guess the main reason, if I'm being honest, I'm interested in being on the board. First of all, when I put my name, I didn't know Jenny Russell was running. I think she'd be phenomenal. Um, but the reason I was interested was because I actually went and looked at another high school in Houston like a month ago because I was, am so frustrated with what's happening with the district. And, um, I feel like my kids are having to work really, really hard to thrive there. And so I figured if I'm unhappy with some, yeah, opportunity for me to be a part of the solution and I can't just sit there and complain about it if I didn't choose to do anything about it.
Thank you.
My question is if a policy or action is voted on by the board, but you voted against it, how would you react in public regarding said policy act or action?
Um, honestly, I think I would react the same way that I would react if I had voted on it. Um, the reason, if anything is voted on, especially privately, nobody's supposed to know who voted for what. Um, I've been on other boards before, um, and we all get a chance to express our opinion, but that's why there's a board, not every, no, I'm not gonna be right all the time. And so you just tend to take the majority. And so if somebody said anything about it, I'd just say like, well, that's what the board voted on. And if you don't like how things are working on the board, when there's an open seat, you should consider running.
Thank you.
In the face of declining resources and the possible need to reduce programs or staff, how or which data would you use to prioritize those decisions?
Um, any data I can get my hands on. I have, uh, taught statistics before and, and I mean, as a scientist, I'm a researcher and we take every single piece of data that I could get. Um, and so I would, I would, you can make numbers, uh, tell you what you want them to tell you. And so I would get as much actual numerical data from every relevant and reliable source that I could. I wouldn't like look at interpretations of data, but actually raw data, raw numbers and get as much of it as I can and come to my own conclusions. Really do the math, do the statistics and figure out where the problems are.
Thank you.
Hi, Iliana, um, my question is, what in your opinion is the greatest issue facing UCISD?
Oh, um, that is hard. I think the biggest thing is, well, to me, and that's because I have a lot of friends that are parents. Um, when we were in Houston, all of the parents at the school were very aware of like, what is important to the budget? What counts to budget? I mean, like, none of us would consider not sending our kids to school because we knew that just by them being there, it affected how much money the school was gonna get. Um, and in conversations with my friends, some of whom I think are like very educated people that have the best intentions, I think that parents don't necessarily understand how their decisions affect what happens at the school, not just attendance, like behavior, volunteering, uh, signing up for a test that they're not planning on taking. Um, and so I think kids are a reflection of their parents. And if the parents, for the most part, have no idea what's going on, then their kids aren't really gonna make the decisions that are necessarily the best for the school district.
What in your opinion is the largest barrier to student success?
Can you say it again? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. What in your opinion is the largest barrier to student success?
Um, I, this is what I've seen with my kids and what I've seen with the kids that I get in the college. It is the lack of accountability. They know that if they don't do something, they will have a million opportunities to do it. And that makes them try less because there's not really any reason to. I then get those kids in college and make it very clear at the beginning of the semester, like, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable? And then get emails Sunday at eleven-thirty, when all their stuff is due at midnight, saying, can I have an extension? Because that's what they're used to. They're used to not having to go to class, not having to turn stuff in on time and always get opportunities because we need them to perform in order for the school to survive. And so instead of holding them to higher standards, we're kinda lowering our standards to let them perform. And I don't, I mean, what's happening is our top performers, unless they're doing sports, are going to Kinnipah, are going to UCA, are going to Sabanau because they wanna be held to a higher standard. And then, and we can only keep those kids if we start making it an environment where having higher standards and what performing is actually gonna be rewarded.
What do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board member?
Uh, well, considering why this position is open, the, the first one would be perseverance. And when you sign up for something, uh, stick with it, no matter what comes up and what doesn't come up. Um, so really, I think it's, that is one. And I think as much as you can, and I think all of us are gonna be somewhat, but, well, anybody who has a childhood at the school is gonna be somewhat biased, um, but to try to not necessarily think of what you think is best for your kids right now, but what's best for the school overall. Because if we improve the school, then whatever the student or even our kids achieve at the school has more meaning because the school has a better reputation. And when people hear about our school and when somebody does really well, they know, oh, they did really well because they tried. Not they did really well because it's easy to do really well, or they succeeded because they fought for it, not because, well, it's really easy to succeed there.
Hi, ma'am. This is Robert Quinones. Is there any particular issue that motivates you to serve on the school board?
Uh, yeah, I think what I said, I have, uh, two kids there. My son's about to start, my daughter, I don't think could be higher achieving if she tried. Um, and I want them to be, I want them to be happy with where they're going to school. I want them to be served by the school they're going to. And I feel like, yes, there's specific things that they want, but overall, we can improve the quality of the school. And that just improves not only their educational experience, but when they leave and they're applying to college and their high school diploma says Uvalde's CISD or Uvalde High School, it's not something that's looked down on. Right? I want us to have, I, I don't want the good kids to be leaving to other schools. I want people to be happy to go to Uvalde because we do offer everything that they need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romedo.
Yeah, um, but I can hang up, all right?
I said, thank you.
Okay, do we have any, do you guys have any more questions or should I?
That concludes the questions.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And Mario, yes, very much. So that concludes, um, the interview for applicants. So we'll move on to item number four, closed session. A closed session will be held under provisions of Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 551, 071, and 551, 074. The time now is seven twenty-nine.
All right, the time now is eight oh eight. Item number five, reconvene from closed session for action relevant to items covered during closed session and other items listed. We would just like to say thank you to all the candidates for coming and sitting with us and answering all our questions. We appreciate each one of you. And we just want to say thank you for for coming up here and wanting to be on this school board.
Madam President, I make a motion to appoint Erica Munoz to fill the unexpired term until the next election.
Motion made by trustee Quinones, second by trustee Gonzalez. At this time, would we have any discussion? Anybody want to say anything?
President said, you know, thank you so much for taking the time and applying this into questions. It means a lot to us and your willingness to come in here and participate in this very important and no task. So appreciate y'all. Thank you.
I do also want to say thank you to everybody that applied. I know that wasn't easy to be on that hot seat. So thank you so much and the people online too. But thank you, Erica, too, for applying. I know you came and we're glad that you still want to come on.
Everybody else to continue to seek the elections during the election process. It's always great to have several people running and letting everybody choose who's going to be the best representative. So thank y'all very much.
All right, all in favor? Vote carries unanimously. Welcome, Ms. Erica Munoz. You will be sworn in at the next board meeting on the twenty-fourth. Vote carries unanimously. Welcome, Ms. Erica Munoz. You will be sworn in at the next board meeting on the twenty first and after today, Mika will call you and fill you in and all the good stuff. So welcome and thank you for coming out. Next, item number six, consider approval of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six board goals. Ms. Colas?
I, I closed this and it logged me out. Is it logged in? Thank you. Are you able to log with that?
That would be one of our, if we ever have to do that again, one of our next steps to tell you up or down.
Okay. Item number six.
Okay. Thank you, President. That is, so the board is required to adopt board goals annually to drive district success. The board goals were developed based on needs assessments, including progress on the twenty-four, twenty-five board goals. The board reviewed the draft and gave feedback on the July tenth meeting, and the final version is being brought for approval at this time.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six board goals as presented in the packet.
Motion made by trustee Suarez, second by trustee Flores. Any discussion?
I just wanted to add, I know I've had female votes about talking about guardrails and we've had so much, but later on, when we look at these again, maybe revisit that or something like that. But I did notice that some of the ones that I had mentioned to Laura was that they were already built in, already in the goal. And so I, I know we don't have the time and it's okay, but I feel like it's already, they're already built in some of the, the guardrails in there. So anyways.
And we'll be bringing the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans to y'all. So you'll be able to see the strategies and ways that we'll be measuring and goals that have been written for the district.
Vote carries unanimously. Item number seven, discuss and consider approval of budget scenarios for planning twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Ms. Colas?
Thank you, President. At this time, I just wanted to ask Ms. Bendali to the podium. She has provided y'all with a couple of different scenarios. And this is really a workshop, really. We need to know from y'all what direction y'all want us to take. Admin is still recommending the ninety percent model of the twenty-four, twenty-five estimated ADA, which is, there's a box around it from what y'all got. I do want to say that the demographers for the state, there's two points I want to make. The demographers for the state project our enrollment. And we run off of that. They look at birth rates, they look at movement, they look at people that are, have, are voting, not, you know, how many people, they look at census records, they look at a lot of things, births in the county from years back. So they make these recommendations based on data and that's what, you know, Ms. Bendali goes off of every year. It's what we go off of every year. So that's number one. Number two is that we don't, the state will pay us based on their estimation for this school year. Like that's what they're going to pay us for. So it would, you know, we have to always remember that, that if we don't overcome or, you know, exceed that number, we're, we're going into fund balance for every penny that we overestimate and build into a budget. So those are just the two things that I wanted to make mention of. But I'll let Ms. Bendali kind of go over what's on the spreadsheet.
All right. So the spreadsheet that y'all were emailed yesterday afternoon. And again, like Ms. Colas said, I did some different comparisons. So first column is where we ended up for twenty-three, twenty-four. The template just already had that on there. So I shared that. And twenty-four, twenty-five is kind of where we're estimating to end up this school year. And then for the next column for twenty-five, twenty-six, if everything stayed the same and we had the same ADA and everything as this exact school year, what the revenue would generate. The next column again is the administration recommendation that I presented last week. Then the next column, that's TEA's pupil projections. And I also passed out some information from TEA as to how they come up with their pupil projections. Then the final column is if we did ninety-five percent of our, where we are anticipating ending up this current school year.
Well, me personally, I definitely want to go to the far right column. I think we're pushing that way where we can get there. And I know you have the experience, and I just want to let you know that we're the ones, if we could choose to go to the right, that's our risk. Not, it's not a reflection on you because you were like, hey, don't do this. But I don't want to put us in a position where we're looking to cut back on stuff and infect, you know, all those programs that we have. Cause we, we have a lot of good programs. And people talk about other school districts, this and that. They don't, they, they fail to mention all the good stuff we do here. We have a lot more programs than any other district in this county, a lot. And we spread ourselves in to accommodate a lot of the kids here in this district to give them more opportunities. And I don't want to take any of that good stuff that we do and jeopardize that. And I'm willing to put my name on that risk that we can do this. Through truancy, getting your attendance up. I know we have community leaders that have contacted me and said that if we give them the district and the kids, they're willing to go knock on doors for us. And that says something. We have great leaders in this community that are willing to do that. We can make this work. And I know what you're saying, Pam.
Saying anything.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you, but I want to let you know, I completely respect you and I know exactly why you're doing what you're doing. And it's probably the right thing to do, but I know we can make this work.
And, you know, I want to say what Simon presented, my husband gave to me too. And so what he did was off of the historical data information that you gave us last year on last year's budget. And so I, I kind of printed it out. I don't know if you want to see it, but it's here. It was last year's data. And so one of the things that is, it's important to understand is that yes, we were hit hard by COVID. It definitely impacted, impacted us. And then the massacre impacted. But what we have seen in the last two years is an upward trend. Is it where we want to be? Not, not exactly, but I believe that, I believe that Ms. Colas has made a change around in, in attendance. And we have seen this, this is from last year's presentation, Ms. Bendali, that you presented to us. I don't know if I made enough, but this is the one that, that But anyways, what, what the calculation is, is that the trend according to what the state is saying, from what I understand, again, accessing TA website is, this is their prediction. Why is it their prediction? Of course, they're going to say, we don't want to give you too much money because if we give you too much money, how are we going to get it back? So they
They'll take it back the next year.
Right. So they'll, they'll take it back. So what they do is they really, really conservative. And they said, we're going to give it this amount, you know, lower. And so, and I understand you even added a percentage to, to what the state has recommended. But based on even, based on what the trend has shown over the years, to say that we're going to a seventy-seven percent ADA is just very, it's unrealistic. It's, it's not possible. If you put that into numbers, we're talking about a whole campus would not be coming. And I just don't see that happening. I think we're improving. We've done so many things for, for the district. And even going off of that far right column, I think that we, we might even be able to go even further to eighty, eighty-one to eighty-three percent. And looking at thirty-one, forty-three or thirty-two, sixty. And it would get us to supporting our staff. The extra money that we're looking at is maybe about four hundred thousand dollars of surplus. If we went with that ADA, it would, it would help us persevere, you know, through this and give incentives to our teachers. I know the hot plate topic has been Slate Creek. If we run off of the thirty-one, forty-three, well, Slate Creek, we continue to, to have this incentive program for our teachers. We keep it. Thirty-one, forty-three would put us at a balanced budget and even more. That would mean that we actually retain the certain amount, the certain attendance right now. We would continue that same attendance. And I don't see how we're going to decrease in it unless there's something else that we don't know about. Is there anything else that you think that, why are we going to downward trend to seventy-seven percent? We've never seen that. And, and all of these years, you'll see here that we've never had that low of attendance ADA. So I just, to me, based on this, I would recommend a thirty-one, forty-three to a thirty-two, sixty on ADA that would get us, you know, be able to say we stabilize, maybe keep the stipends, keep, keep them where they're at. I would even like to see, just like all the other districts is just across the board, a raise for them where we incentivize our teachers to know that they're important and we want them here. And I'm not saying that not giving it to them is they're not important. I just would like to, to give them that. The state is trying to provide that for them. I know there's a percentage of people that wouldn't receive it. I'll share this with y'all because this is, let's see. These are my points of why I would want to do it. But, but more than anything, it, it's a conservative approach still. But it's also, it helps us keep incentives for our programs. It helps incentivize our teachers. And we still continue with the, with the, looking at the budget, looking at the deficit. We wouldn't even have to look at selling any properties right now if we continued on that with the thirty-one, forty-three. We would continue, we would have a balanced budget. And we would be able to maybe even give some people some raises. So I don't, I don't know.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, I don't know if there's anybody else that, but it's like Robert said, it's on, it's on us as a board and, and looking at that community perspective. We trust, but we verify. And, and I think that our ADA is going to be higher than seventy-seven percent. It's, it's going to be higher. It can't be lower than that. It hasn't been that way. Historical average shows us that since nineteen, is it, was it thirteen to fourteen? It's never been that low.
I, I respect what trustee Quinones and trustee Gonzalez are saying. And yes, at the end of the day, it is, it is our decision, right? And but what just were, you know, and, you know, we said, okay, we're not blaming Ms. Bendali. It's our decision. What just worries me about that is that, yes, I mean, I would, who wouldn't want to raise? I want to raise, you know? I want to raise in the jobs that I work and that doesn't come all the time. But I take it from my standpoint as, you know, the, the money manager in the household is, I don't want to, me, I don't want to overspend and then there's a rainy day and we don't have any money to cover that. Cause my fear is, yes, we make it happen this year. And then we have to come back to the board next year and work on RIFs. I don't want to do that. I mean, we're talking about taking care of people right now. What about taking care of them down the road? So, I mean, that's the only thing where I stand. I mean, I, I'm not a statistician, I'm not a CPA, looking at the demographers from the state and I'm trusting Ms. Bendali. So, I mean, that's just where I stand. Yeah, no, no, I, I get it. Yeah.
Yeah. If you look at that, it, it kind of breaks it down. And so it's eighty-three percent was last year, thirty-two, sixty. All of the trends from nineteen, twenty has never been at seventy-seven percent. The, the state and what they do is they recommend it so they don't overpay us. And so that's the reason why that, that average comes in as for ADA is so low. But again, I, I don't know of any reason why we would be that low. Is there something that, that we don't know about as a board that you would say, we're going to, we're going to lose attendance? I mean, we're going to lose kids. Is, is that not enrollment? Is, we're talking about ADA. So we've, even our goals that we just approved said we're going to increase by three percent. So I mean, three percent, you know, is, is still a good amount of money.
If we were, so I think that it's a strong possibility that our enrollment will go down, unfortunately. And with the political climate being what it is, there could be points in time where people choose not to send their kids to school. I think it's more and more leaning that direction. And the demographers at the state do look at birth rates. And with a decrease in birth rates four years ago, I'm, I'm concerned about our pre-K numbers. I, I don't know that our pre-K numbers will be what they have been based on what I've read from the state and from the demographers. So that's where I think it would be. We may not have attendance, our attendance might not go down. But with fewer kids, that, you know, it's, the percentage is
But the percentage is still based on the enrollment number. So it wouldn't
But with fewer kids, we get paid, it's still a percentage of that number, but with fewer kids, it's still, it's fewer kids. So I do think that, you know, there will be, we probably will see a decline in enrollment, but I don't, I don't, I can't predict attendance. We're doing everything we can. We met with, so that y'all know, we met with two JPs today and the county attorney and his investigator and members of our administrative team to set up the, the flow for referring people for truancy. And so we're working through all of that. So we will be taking people to court for not sending their kids to school. So maybe it'll go up. I, I, you know, I, I hope, I hope it goes up. We're still going to be doing our, motivate our students, Texas, you know, attendance incentives on Fridays whenever a lot, on the Fridays whenever we don't have school for kids. So I don't, I don't know.
There's something that kind of concerns me because next month, they're going to close down a business. And I think there's seventy-eight individuals that are going to be out of a job. If you don't have a job, then more likely they're going to go somewhere else to, to, and then if you go, you're going to take the kids. So I mean, that's, that's another thing that, that I was thinking about. It's like they, you know, they, they're trying to get, bring another business to the same place, you know, but you know, so far then there hasn't been one. So seventy-eight individuals are going to be laid off.
I still think going to the right, let's, let's get balanced for a year. And then we, once we know for sure how we're balanced at zero, then we can take the numbers from this year, go to the next year and be like, hey, we, we can go up a little bit further. You know, increase, actually give a raise this year, not this year, but next year, but let's, let's get balanced. And it's, it's not too far up to go where we can't be cautious and pull back a little bit.
Did you happen to look at this graph?
Yeah.
Do you see the time period? The only time period in a thirty-two, span of thirty-two years that the district had the optimal fund balance according to TA was about two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. The rift was in two thousand eleven. But in a thirty-two year period, there's only been about two years that the district That the district had the required fund balance per TEA.
Right.
So, just wanted to point that out.
I think um, I think Robert, I agree with Robert on it and and the only reason, I mean, we see all of the people all around the surrounding areas. Where they're, everyone's getting across the board raises, um, not, not the same, not equal. Um, but I know that they are and they're, they're incentivizing them and and like Diana Cruz said earlier, it's not a district issue only. You know, that we're, we're in this position. I think it's everywhere all over the state. Um, I have confidence that our staff and Ms. Colas leading us is gonna increase this enrollment, this ADA. I know what you're saying about enrollment, but I think you have turned it around already. You're making movement in the right direction. And and even this number is still conservative. I think, um, if you look at that one, the budget trends, ADA twenty-nine thirty-three, that's the deficit. But if we went straight off of a balanced budget, it's thirty-seven, thirty-seventy-eight, and that's what Ms. Bendelie is, that's a balanced budget right there. Hers is thirty-ninety-seven. That's a ninety-five percent prediction. That's balanced. That means we don't have to cut anything. If we went to a thirty-one forty-three, eighty-three percent, we have a four hundred thousand, uh, do, four hundred thousand dollar surplus. That means it goes into the fund balance. Um, again, it it means we get to keep things as they are. Uh, we keep our stipends, we incentivize our employees to stay here. Um. I mean, I, I make a motion that that we um, approve this budget, but with the estimated ADA at, at thirty-one forty-three. To thirty-two sixty, it can range in that. It's, it's a good percentage, but I'd like thirty-one forty-three to thirty-two sixty. Um, that's about eighty-one to eighty-one percent to eighty-three percent is, is what that increase would be. Um, as far as ADA, right now, we're at eighty-three. So the thirty-one forty-three is an eighty-one percent. We're still saying there might be a decrease, but I'd like to make that motion that we approve this budget based on that ADA of thirty-one forty-three. That's an eighty-one percent, eighty-one point eight percent. Um.
There's not a budget to, this is just the direction of the budget, so it would be.
Right, well, that's what I would like to make a motion on as far as the trend of information asking. I thought it was considering take action on the agenda, so that's why.
But this, this won't, this won't encompass everything that we stipends and all that, or this is only, this is only focusing on this conversation.
This is just, what, where do y'all want us to be?
The deficit of nine hundred thousand, it's gonna include it. Right now, there's no stipend, so that's what we're gonna vote on on Monday, so that's gonna have to be included. We're gonna have to cut.
Monday will bring the whole budget where you'll get to look at everything and currently, the numbers that we're presenting y'all. All, the numbers that y'all saw are with the cuts to the stipends. Those are with the cuts to the stipends. A nine hundred thousand dollar deficit based on what the state is projecting was with us cutting stipends.
Last time y'all told us it wasn't. I asked Ms. Bendelie and she said, no, that it hadn't been included yet. But so we do the thirty-one twenty-six, it's, it's.
Then I misunderstood your question, no.
Okay, so.
All this, the recommended stipends that we are recommending are based on this, in this plan at the nine hundred thousand dollar deficit. That's why I said anything for a thousand dollars, if you wanna increase anything, a thousand dollars, then add another hundred to it for the fringe.
So it would be, um, if we went off of just the same ADA that we have right now, eighty-three percent, we would have a two million dollar surplus. Is what we would have. If we went straight off of what we have right now, we just hold the number, we hold the attendance pattern as it is right now. And that's what our goal is, it's three percent increase.
But we'll have fewer kids, so it's very likely that.
We don't know that. We're gonna base it on just an assumption that we're gonna have less kids?
Well, we're basing it on the demographers from the state, saying that fewer kids were born four years ago. So we're gonna have few, it's likely that we will have fewer kids. So the demographers look at all of that. They look at the birth rates, they look at trends, they, they look at all the things. And so I do agree that we should not go down to where the state was. I mean, that, that's, that's a, I, I don't see how we could go down to twenty-six fifty-five. Um, but I don't know that we wanna build a budget that has a two million dollar, you know, that's.
Well, the two million dollars might have more revenue, but it also has all the salaries that TEA is.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, I think that the thirty-two sixty would give us, ADA would give us two million dollars.
So, so that I guess we're clear. You know, we should hire, like, you know, y'all are proposing, you don't make it, you don't reach that level, right? A year from now, you're, you're gonna get into the, into the balance, into the fund balance, take money out and this, then what happens after that? Then when does somebody step in and say, hey, you're just not financially responsible?
Um, so we would, if we, if we continue to go into fund balance, then, and we don't have money to operate. We have to file exigency and then we have to make a ton of cuts. The state doesn't come in and give us money. They, we have to figure it out. So, um, it's. We, Pam is concerned this coming year about paying, because of the low amount in our fund balance, which is likely to be about four point two million after the end of this, after the end of the fiscal year. Um, about paying bills in a timely manner for next year. So we've got to be putting money back into fund balance and so whenever we. You know, overestimate a budget, then it's, um, we, it comes out of fund balance and it's a, it's a bad trend. I mean, I think that what Pam was trying to share about it being thirty-two years of us running deficit budgets. Or not having, I'm sorry, not, thirty-two years of us not having enough money in fund balance. I mean, I think that it's a, it's a way of, it's a mode of operation for us now. And we really need to be very frugal. And make sure that we are able to put money back into our fund balance because we have a lot of capital maintenance projects that need to be done. We have replacement, maintenance replacement schedules that need to happen.
We gotta do something with technology next year.
Gonna have to do something with technology next year, so, um.
The reason, I'm sorry, so the reason I ask you that question is. Is I wanna just make sure that we know what we're getting ourselves into. You know, the day comes and we, I'm with you, right? I don't wanna cut stipends. I'll fight for all these things all day long, but I also wanna be on the record as to like, when we go down this path. What, we're gonna be held accountable for that. If we succeed, we're successful, then all kudos to everybody, right? If we fail, it's on us. So that's why I asked you that question.
Well, I think the big thing is, is that we're saying we maintain and and I'm not saying that we take a risk. I'm saying let's be realistic with the number, especially if we're gonna say we're gonna lose three hundred kids. That's what that estimate is. That's a whole grade. That's all of, that's all seniors. They're all gone. And so, so it's a whole grade that's gone. And so that is, that's concerning, you know, to think that if. If we think our budget's a problem, that's a problem. If we really go down to seventy-seven percent, that's a bigger problem. So I mean, if if that really is a realistic number, which I don't believe, I believe that the state and what they do is, they've done this for years. And you can go out in TEA and they, they have a lower number. Why? Because they don't wanna overpay us. They can't overpay every district because they would lose money and so are, they'd have to go after us like Pam was saying. But they're not gonna overshoot the number. So they, what, what that means is they're gonna pay us all year long based on that estimate, on that ADA. And then at the end of the year, we, we file for it and they send it to us. It's exactly what happened this year. That's why we got two million dollars and we will only have a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. But um, it's what happened. We. And 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 I think that also, you're absolutely right. And I think you've done a great job in cutting and and sparing back on things that we don't need. I think you have done that over the year. We've done that. We've increased attendance. Um, we've done all of those things, but what, what we're saying when we approve that lower number is we're saying we're losing three hundred kids. And I, I don't think that that, that's not a realistic number. I don't see how any of us here on the board could think that that's a realistic number. And what that number means is we cut more people. We're cutting people based on that number. Classroom sizes increase. It impacts education. So yes, it is kinda scary to say we're gonna go high on that number, but it's what all the districts are doing right now. They're doing that, not, not, we're not even saying in approve of a, a deficit budget. I'm not even saying that. It, this would balance the budget, even if we went straight off of that thirty-one number that, that Pam, the ninety-five percent, that's a balanced budget at that point. Um, it would take up, up the nine hundred thousand and give us actually a little bit extra if we went to thirty-ninety-seven on the ninety-five percent prediction. But even then, that ADA prediction is a seventy-eight point four percent. That's still, our ADA right now is eighty-three percent. We're still saying we're losing, I don't know, a hundred something kids, a hundred and fifty kids. Which is half a grade level. It, it's not, again, realistic. But if you wanna be conservative, be conservative with a thirty-one forty-three, um, I think that that would still give us plenty of wiggle room. It's, or not, thirty-ninety-seven is what you said, ninety-five percent. You could do that. Um, that still gives us wiggle room. It's still gonna cut some things, but. Thirty-one forty-three, thirty-two sixty, those all would give us some wiggle room to keep all of these things. How do we keep, how do we cut this amount of money? Well, Slate Creek, obviously, that's the biggest one. We got a million dollars sitting there. So if we're gonna say that we're gonna go to twenty, twenty-nine thirty-three, nine hundred thousand dollar deficit, well Slate Creek, well, there you go. We're gonna lose that incentive program that we've invested in. Uh, we're gonna lose stipends, we're gonna lose people. These things we could keep and we could say, keep focus on our attendance. You're already looking at it. You're looking at the judges, right? That, and and I think that is gonna help. I think we maintain this. We keep Slate Creek, we keep it as an incentive. We get our teachers here based on that incentive. We look at our attendance trends, which are increasing, stabilize them. And if we get extra money, put it into those people that are out there with the truancy people. I mean, we could even hire somebody extra for that alone to get this going. Um, I, I am concerned with people having to carry multiple jobs. I know y'all all are. I know that that's what Pam said the other day. She's having to do a lot of jobs. Um, but we need to stabilize it and and to me, I just wanna say, go with the number. If you're gonna go with a number, go with eighty-one percent. That's still even less than what we have. That means we're losing people. But it's, it's a conservative number. It's a conservative number, even if we do end up losing people. And that's thirty-one forty-three and ADA, eighty-one percent.
Gotta start planning for when the state kicks in, the whole, you have to be certified, no more doing that. And, you know, we have Slate Creek, we have, we, we need to start getting these programs in to start attracting people now. And we're gonna be fighting a lot of districts next year over certified people, cause the state doesn't have enough. I don't know why they passed the law when they don't want to fund education. It, it doesn't make sense, but we are gonna be in a battle of getting certified teachers for core subjects. I know that right now. We need to start prepping for that, because that's the next big issue is we don't have teachers and we just don't.
But a thirty-one forty-three would help us keep Slate Creek for that purpose alone, to get teachers here and incentivize them in that way. But that would be a thirty-one forty-three, that's an eighty-one percent and I, I think. I have been against keeping Slate Creek just because I don't wanna lose, I don't wanna hit our teachers anymore or cut any more people. But I think if we keep it and we increase the ADA to thirty-one forty-three, you incentivize them in that way, um, get them here. I think that it has worked in that way, in some way to incentivize them to come. Um, but I think this even, I didn't know that stipends were not included. I thought you had said.
Stipends are included at the uh, dollar amount that will be presented in the compensation plan Monday night.
Yeah, so I did, I thought, I didn't understand that. So that, so again, I, I think this would help us. That even thirty-one forty-three would get us um, to a million or maybe to thirty-two sixty would get us to a million. Um, it would get us closer there with some more in our pockets and um, I think we're gonna meet it. I don't think we're gonna get seventy-seven percent. I, I really don't. I think we're gonna get, kids are gonna come to school. We're gonna, you've been doing it. You've been getting them here. The number's increased. I mean.
Ms. Bendelie, can I ask you a question? What are your thoughts if we use that thirty-one forty-three? What are your concerns?
I think we're gonna overshoot it. I think we're gonna expect more revenue than we're gonna generate.
So we're gonna do two percent decrease in enroll ADA, um, attendance?
I think our enrollment's gonna go down.
That's the issue of the enrollment.
And if, if they're not enrolled, they can't be in the chair to earn ADA.
But doesn't the percentage go off of the enrollment number?
They have to be enrolled to generate ADA. But we also don't know what the impact's going to be with a lot of the four-day work week, I mean, the four-day school. Because, you know, as we pointed out last time, each day they miss is a larger percentage, just like Mr. Quinones said, each day they're there, it's a larger percentage. But I've asked around and they have, people I've asked have not seen that that has helped their attendance any. They haven't said it necessarily hurt it, but it, it wasn't the salvation they thought it was going to be.
We did, I would say, we did it for a different reason. We did it because our teachers need respite. They need training. We need, you know. We're trying to have a, a, take a trauma-informed leadership approach. It was really listening to teachers is why we went to, to it.
The whole Slate Creek thing, you know, I, I'm getting mixed messages, you know, it's sell it, sell it, sell it. And then you go and you uproot these people. You gotta go buy a house. Some people don't sign with you anymore. They leave the town, cause they're not gonna pay fifteen hundred bucks a month. And now we're talking about keeping it? And we're not voting on it. You're saying, hey, push the number up and then keep the property. It's conflicting to me. You know, I understand what you're saying, but if you're gonna do that, then you still, we're not voting on it, right? But you still have to do something with that thing, you know, you, you're all over the map.
Well, the only reason I said that is cause I know that I, I know as a board, we're, we're split on that too. And and I think, um, I, you know, I've heard different arguments for keeping it and different arguments for selling it, right? Um, I can see both ends, in all honesty, I can. Um, but what I see here and what we're dealing with, with our teachers incentivizing them, they're leaving, people are leaving and it's hard to get them here. And that's why I would like to see us have a package. I mean, I'm seeing everywhere, they're posting boards that are approving the raises and how they incentivize them in. I wanna see a package that we offer them and and it could be Slate Creek, you know? But, but I'd like to see a package and, and I would like to see a raise, you know, for them. And and I know that, I know that that's, it might not be possible, but that's what I'm seeing. And I see people leaving and that's my concern. And how do we keep them here? I know Robert told me a story about one teacher that, that left, um, regarding stipends and some of them left because of. Different programs that they were getting paid through. I don't wanna be very specific, but anyways, so they've left. But because other districts were able to offer that to them, are they better than us? I don't think so. I think that they have the same ADA problem. I think the state is saying the same thing to them. That's the point, is that we do have to take a little risk. We have to look at the trend of data. We have to say, we hope that that data's gonna go up. It is, it is a risk that we have to take. But in the ideal world, we continue upward trend of attendance. We have our truancy officers or, I don't know what you call them, justices of pieces I hear you talking about. So, and get them going, get that program going. We've talked about the PMS data, we've talked about all these other things that we're increasing with. And I believe there's gonna be other things that come down the road. We've also talked about selling properties, which I don't really wanna. We've also talked about selling properties, which I don't really want to visit unless it's absolutely necessary, because it's nice to have those properties. Um, but at the same time, it it's something in the background that we're getting um, what is it called? The land value for them, the yeah, the appraisals. And so we are gonna have that too. Um, I just don't want to cut us so much that we continue to lose teachers. And we continue to just pile things on and people will will just leave. And the worst part is it impacts our children. It's ultimately impacting our kids and classroom size and all of that, so.
No, I mean, well, I, no, Ms. Ms. Bendley, I'll answer that question. I was just gonna ask, um, we haven't done enrollment yet, right? Uh, that's next week, no, next week. That's next week. And that's after the board meeting, so we won't even have that enrollment. You know, of course, and Hamey pointed out seventy-eight people losing their jobs. And if they uproot, then that is gonna go down more. Thank you for your input.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you you, we've been talking about all these systems, and I think this is the year they're gonna be in place.
Exactly.
So tonight on this, item number seven, you want us, are we giving you a number? Are we voting on what you presented or not voting? What are you on item number seven? Where do we go from there?
I I need direction. I mean, I'd like for it to be one of the scenarios presented.
Well, I I made that motion for thirty-one forty-three.
She made a motion for thirty-one forty-three to thirty-two sixty.
In the range.
Do I have a second?
I I I do like the thirty-one hundred at the ninety-five percent. I think that might make other members feel a little bit more safe staying at a little bit lower range.
So there's no, there's.
So there's not a second, you're basically on the modification of it, so I think you can do that.
Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
I'm new to this. Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, because your motion is to go with the thirty-one point four-three, correct?
Mine was, but he's making an amendment to my motion, so.
At the thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one hundred?
Thirty-one hundred.
Go back to what I said right now. I can, I I see your point, right? And again, it goes, it goes back. Oh, we can go into, okay, that's you.
We're in the motion phase. After we second, then we can discuss, sorry. If there's a second. Oh, I'll second his if that, because that's what you're waiting for. I'll second Roberts if I thought he was modifying mine, so that's.
You're seconding with the.
Thirty-one hundred. We're just trying to be clear. Okay, now we can have discussion, sorry.
Here's my, here's my opinion on this, you know, if if we're gonna be doing this, we gotta ask some kind of question. And I think it ties into the properties, you know, so that if we do have to spend money from the fund balance, you know, we really need to consider um, what we've been talking about, selling these, sending these items. And if we do that, then I can, if we do that, then I would be able to support your thirty-one hundred.
I I don't think we could really talk about selling properties, though. It's not a.
Still on the table, Jesse. I mean, it's, we're just trying to give Pam some direction as she goes forward.
When does this have to be published?
I have to have it to the newspaper by whatever that Wednesday is. I believe it's August sixth by five P M. But I have to have time to develop the notice. And I, Friday, the twenty-fifth, I'll have this, I I should have the certified values from the three appraisal districts. Because all this is on estimated values from April.
We have enrollment next week?
We have, we have registration next week. But remember, kids will continue to, parents will continue to enroll their kids at campuses. Um, I can tell you, we had pre-K enrollment and we only had a hundred and something kids enroll for pre-K, which is down two hundred from last year. And now we may have two hundred kids show up. I don't know.
I mean, I think that definitely doesn't happen. I don't, I don't know. A lot of people don't enroll them. That was something new we were doing, where we were asking for them to do it early and trying to collect all that information. So I think that also, I think kids will come. Um, the other part of it is that if, for whatever reason, we say this is the number um, and say it tanks, say, you know, no one shows up and we do have three hundred kids that that I mean, I don't even know that, how that calculation happens, honestly. I don't know if that enrollment number and ADA and how we receive the number, I don't know that calculation. Um, but if that happens, then come back and we'll make an amendment to it. But I think.
And what are you gonna do with the teachers that have a contract that we've hired based on that number? They have a contract and we'll have to continue to pay them for the the year.
Not hiring anybody based on this. I don't think we are.
No, but I mean, we we have to hire based on enrollment.
Yeah, but I don't think, we're not firing.
Well, if it tanks, what are we gonna do? If it, we're just gonna absorb it with fund balance?
I mean, if the fund balance, we do have money in the fund balance. Last year, we approved a two-point-five million dollar deficit budget. And we ended up with three hundred thousand. And we're we're just saying, let's be realistic with our numbers. I understand your concern, but I also feel confident in what Ms. Colas is doing and the team that she has brought. I do feel, I feel that you have done that. You've increased attendance. And so, and I think you're gonna continue to do it. You're looking at these incentive programs and that's what I think is, it's improved.
I think that the community getting involved will help. My major concern is our enrollment dropping. I think that many families may have gone home over the summer and may not come back to us. Like, if we had undocumented students, I think that because of the political climate, I think that we may have had people leave and maybe they don't want to come back because they're nervous. I know that that, the fear of having their kids taken from school last year definitely impacted our attendance in the second semester. And so those are also some politi- like, those are some concerns that I have as well.
Um, the trend was about fifty students every year that we've lost. And there was a a climate years ago that that happened with, so I I think it's probably still been about fifty. And even then, I think Pam's number and what Robert is suggesting is still taking into account if we have a hundred and eleven kids that don't show up, that's still a big number. That's whole grade, half a grade. Seniors, how many were there? Two hundred? Half of them. It'd be half. They don't show up. And I still think we're gonna have the people that come.
I agree so.
Motion was made by trustee Guinones to go with the number of thirty-one hundred. Second by trustee Gonzalez. All in favor? The vote does not carry, Ms. Bendley. And are those opposed?
No, I'm 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 not abstaining because I still don't have, I I don't have all of everything that I need to make a for or against. So I'm abstaining.
And I'm here with J J too, like, what they say makes sense. But then I see this side and so I just, I mean, seventy-seven percent, that's what we're saying. Look at the trends. It's never been that low.
I'm just so, I'm just so worried. I I would do not want to look. I I wasn't here. You were here. You were here. I don't want to look a hundred people in the eye and tell them they don't have a job coming back. I just don't want to do that. I mean, I just, I don't, and again, I take it back to my layman terms is that I don't, when I budget stuff for what we need at home, I don't over-budget because I don't, what if that money's not there? Yeah, we have a savings account, but I don't want to touch that savings account if because what happens if my roof cracks and I need to redo the roof? I just, that that's just my explanation.
The number that we're looking at is still seventy-eight percent. We're still, we're barely, we're barely increasing it, you know, from the seventy-seven. It's not even the eighty-one or close to the eighty-three percent that we are at right now.
So we don't have enough information, because I'm kind of like, you know, we don't have enough info. What what do we need? So that we can make that decision on something.
That that was gonna be my question.
So what is it that, is I'm kind of, I'm trying to be conservative, I'm trying not to gamble on it, but at the same time, I'm thinking, I don't think, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a C P A.
So do you think we're gonna lose that percentage of people, that they're not gonna come to school? Yeah, no, I'm asking the board, like, what do you think? Seventy-seven percent? I mean, if you look at the trends, we've had all kinds of different climates of of presidential candidates and everything over since so many years. I mean.
We have not had the enforcement that's been going on the way it is. And 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 again, again, but I mean, again, I'm also going with a loss of the of a business here too.
It's only really going up five percent.
That's it. It's what she suggested on the high end. That's it.
Are you feeling still the same way with the thirty-one hundred?
I'm still sticking with my original.
I think we can.
I mean, I know, I'm conservative. I'll tell you, I'm conservative, but.
I think going up five percent.
Mine is the twenty-nine thirty-four, the one in the box.
That's a seventy, that's a seventy percent. And it's like Robert said, it's only five percent that we're looking at.
And if it came in higher, that would be great, because we have lots of needs, just roofs, you know.
And I know that might be the, because what you might be forecasting is saving that a larger amount of money that we would just put back in. But I just can't see how we strip everything so much bare bones. We already are bare bones. And it would be nice to save that money, but it's like, I told Jesse this example, at a, as a household. You know, you told Juanita you want to save twenty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna eat grant, green beans for the next year. But you know what? We can save five, we can save fifteen thousand dollars and eat some meat. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting. Let us have a little bit of meat. You know, let come off of that height, that conservative number, so that our district can have a little bit of meat for our, for our staff. That's the example. That's the best example, that we're going so far low, seventy-seven percent. That means that we have no hope in our attendance. And really, if if we're gonna vote on that amount, then we need to have a whole other discussion about ADA, because that's, that's impossible.
So what what do y'all need to? What can I present so that you have a better feeling or can? What do you need?
How? Um, how hard, how how hard is it for you? And answer honestly to come up with the projections with both, so we have those two in hand? With the twenty-nine thirty-four and the thirty-one hundred? Because I'm a visual.
I mean, I still don't have all the factors. I don't even have my certified values till next Friday, the twenty-fifth.
It's a lot of work, Kathy.
I mean, there's a lot of guesswork in here and, I mean, I I have an idea how I'm gonna end up next year, but I won't know that till the first or second week of September. You know, I mean, there's, there's lots of things that, school finance, you know, I understand it seems very easy, but I don't have all the, I don't have all the figures. I don't have all the figures until the whole school year's over.
What's the worst-case scenario if we do go with the twenty-nine thirty-four that you're suggesting?
I mean, I, we're still looking at salary negotiations. I mean, we're still, we're still looking at stuff. It's still a work in progress. Um, I mean, I'd like to have my certified values to know. And then instead of having to go back and calculate what I think the impact of moving the homestead exemption to a hundred and forty thousand, the appraisal district's gonna give me those numbers. Right now, that is an an estimated, a mathematical estimate that Mo Casey and them have built into the template, just.
That's just the wash, isn't it? The state reimburses us for the same amount, like what you said for the taxes, that's.
I I've not seen that they're gonna hold us harmless, but I can do more research, but uh.
That's what I read, that they're gonna give us money.
Okay, well then, you're you're ahead of me.
If they were going to, it would have been built into the template. So if if it's coming to us, it's built into the template.
I mean, that's exactly what we said about the the taxes or whatever the sales or whatever, they replace it. The state's not gonna give us more, but they're gonna replenish it. So that's what they normally do.
You're the expert. I mean, you've been keeping us afloat all this time and, I mean, I just don't want to riff, no.
I don't either. That was not pleasant. I mean, I think some of those people that were riffed back in two thousand eleven, they would have been happy to have a five thousand dollar reduction in salary and continued to have medical insurance and have an income than to have nothing.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we um, I make a motion that we go with the twenty-nine point thirty-four as presented by our CFO.
Motion made by trustee Swadis for the number of twenty-nine thirty-four, second by trustee Flotus. All in favor? Against? Against. So we're tied.
I know, and. You know, I'm I'm with Robert. I'm kind of learning the the ropes, you know, but you know, I I sit here and I think about everything that we've been through. Our goals are setting, you know, the Robert mentions over and over, the truancy. And you gotta believe in this, right? And, you know, it is a hard call. And just, do you gamble with it, not gamble with it? You know, what are you gonna impact, you know, at the end? Do you impact them now or at the end, kind of thing? And then, so if we believe in the product that we're selling, then you know, I I go with that, but I gotta support, right? But more importantly, I gotta have the su- the support of the community, the parents to get involved. I think, Miss Ayala, the applicants mentioned it, you know, their parent involvement. And we try and we try and we try, and I don't know what else we can do, but if you can just get them to class and make it count, then you wouldn't feel this kind of pressure up here. And if I sit here through meeting after meeting after meeting and I don't believe in what I'm selling and I'm cutting myself short, then I probably don't have a lot of business being up here. So, and it sounds like I'm wishy-washy here, right? And then it's what it seems like, but I think ultimately, we believe in each other and I'm 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 gonna make a motion to at least meet halfway, you know, thirty-one fifty. I'm sorry, that's a little more than halfway. Yeah, you know, somewhere in the middle. And it's sort of make a motion on. Thirty fifty.
Motion made by trustee, oh, do I have a second? Or um. Thirty fifty. Do I have a second?
I'll second, but I'm gonna make an amendment to it to thirty uh, ninety-seven. That is what Pam recommended. That gives us a balanced budget at thirty-nine.
No, Pam didn't recommend thirty ninety-seven.
Yes, it is here, the ninety-five.
No, it's not a recommendation. It's a scenario, but it's not a recommendation.
The one with the black box that says admin recommendation is the one that admin is recommending.
What Pam presented, okay, if that makes you feel better. So ninety-five percent is that what, is what I'm saying. Ninety-five percent, that is um, the amount that gives. that is, um, the amount that gives us a balanced budget as it is. Thirty ninety-seven.
Thirty ninety-seven?
It's the right-hand column on the.
Well, um, trustee Riso made the motion at thirty fifty and trustee Gonzalez
modified it.
Modified it at thirty ninety-seven with.
Yeah.
So, so she amended his motion, so it's gonna be up to him, but whether to agree with that amendment. If you don't agree with it, then it dies and we have to.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Thirty ninety-seven, Ms. Bendelie. What are your feelings?
She stands on twenty-nine.
I, I stand where I was. I would rather next August have good news. And I mean, we're gonna monitor it throughout the year, but I mean, once people, you know, if we're mon, if we do the ninety-five percent and we monitor it every six weeks, and of course, the first three, six weeks are gonna look really good because the kids come to school the first semester. It tanks the second semester. But at the, by the time it tanks, staff already have contracts. We already have things in place that can't be stopped unless somebody leaves. And I would rather come in August, and I mean, throughout the year, I can give you updates, but I would rather come in August and say, you know, for one, we continue to be very conservative and, you know, we, we added some money back to fund balance.
With the thirty ninety-seven, um, if the, if the number stayed the way the state is saying it's going to go, we would have to tap into the fund balance?
Yeah, I mean, states, it cuts way back, but I mean, again, I think the state, you know, I didn't agree with their numbers. That's why we discussed what we thought it would be. I mean, we had a discussion over it. It wasn't just, you know, all of a sudden, let's just come up with this number. And, you know, the state right now will pay us on their pupil projections. And we have an option when the state puts those out every other year, that we can go in and adjust them to what we think they're going to be. And last December, when we looked at them, we didn't feel like we had enough information that we felt like we should stay, change what the state demographers have come up with. You know, so we will live with their cash flow until next September and then settle up. If they owe us money, they will pay us. If not, they'll take it. And I would dr, much rather end the year with them owing us than us owing them.
I think the only problem with that prediction is it, it means that we have to cut nine hundred thousand dollars in salaries. And I don't know how we can take that. I don't know how our kids can take that. And how will they learn in classrooms?
Just like trustee Riso said.
We've got to.
We, we believe in ourselves. We believe in staff. We believe in, you know, the systems that we're gonna put in place for truancy. Um, the teachers getting that extra time to, to plan, have better stuff for the kids want to come to school, to get them engaged in it. Like, we, if we don't believe in ourselves or what we're saying, then, you know, might as well, why be here if we're not gonna believe the stuff that we talk about?
We're implementing our strategies in place.
I think a lot, I've heard the negative about the Fridays off and the kids, but it's like Mrs. Cola said, this time, it's also about the teachers. It's about giving them their time allowed. And it gives back, as a parent, I would see, it's giving back to my child because you're not taking out of your workday to go to training, to go do what you have to do and leaving my child and the classroom with a sub or unattended or whatever. So, yeah, I, I believe what we're doing and I, and I understand it, right? A little nervous, but, um, we're, we, we're giving back to our teachers too because they deserve it. They deserve this time and it's not about cutting kids and kids going to school less days. I mean, if I was a kid in school during that time, I would be thrilled to death. But again, it's, that Fridays is not a bad, it's not a bad thing. It, it, it's to support our teachers and we're here for the kids, we're here for the teachers. And this time, the teachers almost outweighed the students in a sense, right? So with that being said, we have a motion for the number of thirty ninety-seven. We have a second, but we have a motion by trustee Gonzalez initially, or secondly. Um, we have a second by trustee Riso. We've had discussion. All in favor for thirty ninety-seven? All opposed? The vote carries at thirty ninety-seven. Item number eight, adjournment.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made by trustee Swattis, second by trustee Flotus. The time now is nine sixteen. We are adjourned.